Good morning. I will now convene the regular meeting of the Board of Lane County Commissioners for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Welcome to those of you who are joining us here in person in Harris Hall and to anyone watching online. First up, I'll make sure there are no adjustments to this morning's agenda to the Board. Administrator, seeing none? Any emergency business?
No.
None. And we will move right into public comment. Just as a reminder, we take speakers in the order in which they've signed up, and they are limited to three minutes. There will be a clock on the wall. When I call your name, you can come to the podium. Please state your name for the record, and your time will begin at that time. And after we complete, anyone who's signed up here in Harris Hall, I'll check with Tanya to see if anyone wishes to speak with us online this morning, and then I'll come back and make sure nobody who arrived late and didn't get a chance to sign in doesn't wish a chance to present their three-minute testimony to the Board this morning. At this time, I have just one person signed up for public comment, and that is Terry Parker. So Terry, I'll welcome you to the podium. Good morning. Thank you. And again, your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Terry Parker. I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of Lane County. The League of Women Voters, if you don't know, is a nonpartisan political organization promoting informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose any political party or candidate, but we do take strong stances on policy issues relating to voting rights, civil rights, and other social policy after doing extended review and study and using a consensus-building process. I'm here today to speak for the League and also have the past President Charles C. Kaler in the audience, and request that you honor the hard work of your Charter Review Committee and support recommendations for establishing an independent review committee for redistricting within the Lane Charter. The League has a long collective memory. Diving into our archives, I found this in a 2011 Position Paper on Local Redistricting. The method should advance the purposes of a representative democracy by allowing citizens meaningful choices and by holding the government accountable to the people. The plan should adhere to all legal requirements and promote competitiveness and partisan fairness. The plan should be developed independently. We've made our position known many times, and you have our written statement, so I won't belabor the point. We look forward to seeing you and hearing and discussing more discussion this afternoon. I do want to take some time, though, to spend the remainder to extend our appreciation for two standout Lane County employees that have provided on separate occasions presentations at our League Speaker Series. County Clerk Dina Dawson, while relatively new in her position here, is so well-grounded and dedicated to the work of reliable and secure elections. She's our people. She's given us insights into what has to happen behind the scenes to do that important work. And when the harassment incident occurred through the mailing of a questionable substance, we, and I assume you, were horrified. My first off-the-cup reaction was, we should send them flowers or donuts or something. And then I thought better that, meaning sending anything, might not be a good response at that time. The League has reached out to offer what support we can do to let the Elections Office know how valuable and how much we appreciate their good work in upholding our democracy. Another standout, last year, when asked to support the removal of the jail levy, we did a bit of research, and I had this eye-opening conversation with your jail administrator, Captain Riley in Jail Services. She and he and the sheriff talked to us recently. The thing that struck me most was Captain Riley's personal story of coming to the understanding that everyone has their own story, and for the people he sees, it is often rooted in early trauma. You could see the understanding in his eyes. You know, you know him. I just want to acknowledge that you have rock stars on your team. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you this afternoon.
Thank you for your public comment. Tanya, is there anyone signed up wishing to speak before the Board this morning online?
Let me check. If you would like to give public comment at the Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 7th, please raise your virtual hand. I do not see any virtual hands raised, so I will return the meeting to you, Chair.
Thank you, Tanya. Is there anyone else in Harris Hall wishing to speak before the Board this morning? Seeing none, that concludes our brief public comment period this morning, and I will turn it over to the Board for response, if any, to public comment or other comments or remonstrance. Mr. Senega.
Thanks, Ms. Parker. We appreciate you taking the time to show up here today and give us your opinions. And I agree, the independent redistricting is something that the County Commissioners really need to look at. But my biggest thanks is for, once again, taking the time to share positive things that are going on with the county. It's not always what we get. We always get, here's the problems, we don't like this, we don't like that. But I agree, we do have a lot of rock stars here at the county, and we need to do what we can to appreciate them. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, Terry, I agree with what Commissioner said. We do have some really great people in Lane County, and they do some really great work, and they do it at the expense of themselves and their families, and so I really appreciate that. I just wanted just to tell you personally, blessings on your trip. When you get that boat outside the water, you're a very courageous person, young woman, and you and your husband are taking some great adventures, and so I wish you well on them. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. And Ms. Parker and Ms. Kaler, thanks for being here this morning. I think you were speaking for both of you when you spoke out loud. I like to write down quotes, and I don't always get them exactly right, so I've kind of muddled yours together a little bit. And you said, "Establish a Charter Review Committee to advance the purposes of a representative democracy." Am I okay with that? That's the one I'll use then. And I really appreciate you taking the time, not just today, but all of the thought that went into your presentation today. I mean, years and years of thought go into the work and the things that you say, and by the time you all say something, you should listen, we should listen, and everybody should listen. So thanks very much. And Chair, there's one other thing I'm going to mention this one, a little bit of an aside. This Saturday is a big day, so everybody listen up very closely as to what's happening this Saturday. We all have a mailbox, right? Anybody not have a mailbox? This Saturday, put some food out by your mailbox. It's the Food for Lane County Letter Carriers Food Drive. Now, it's been going on for a long, long time, and I'll mention, not a lot of people do know this, but there was a point in time where every single county in the nation had Letter Carriers Food Drives. What people don't know is that they started right here in Eugene, that a man who both Commissioner Trigga and I know quite well, Mark Nelson, who was the president of the Carriers Union, he was also a member of the Board of Food for Lane County for some years. And here's a quick quote on Mark Nelson. Hunger struck close to home for Mark Nelson more than three decades ago. This was written 20 years ago, by the way, early in his career with Postal Service. I'd just started delivering my grandmother's mail. She was 95 years old. After a month or so, I realized she was on a very fixed income, and I thought, wow, you know, maybe if I did a food drive, maybe my grandma would get a food basket someday. That's a true, actual quote, full accuracy. I didn't mudge that one together. So think about this. This Saturday, you have an opportunity. And I was going to bring a couple of cans of tuna to illustrate the kinds of things that Food for Lane County likes. They'll take anything, just not perishable items against the mailbox. But they like protein, they like shelf-stable canned or packaged protein goods. And this Saturday, before the mail carrier comes, put a bag out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. I will also just appreciate the League for what you do all year, every day, all the time, engaging with folks, being so thoughtful, diligent, in making sure the general public has an opportunity to understand issues that affect all of us. So thank you so much, and thanks for coming out to present this morning. And I will just note that today is the opening day of the Tuesday Farmer's Market right across the street. I'm guessing I'll see lots of county folks out there shopping during the lunch hour, but it's always an exciting time of year to see the tents pop up on a Tuesday morning across the way at the pavilion. So support your local farmer and get out there and get some good produce this afternoon. Thank you. Moving along, we have before us a consent calendar. All items listed here are considered to be routine. If anyone had questions or wished to make comment on any one of these items, they could have been pulled from the consent calendar. Otherwise, I will look for a motion on today's items.
Chair, I'd like to move and approve the adoption of the consent calendar for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Buck to approve today's consent calendar. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have announcements from County Administration. Good morning, Mr. Mokrisky.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, and very timely. Thank you to the public speakers that were here this morning. We'll provide a brief update for you first on our elections, and next week, you'll be pleased to know that our County Clerk, Dina Dawson, will be here in person to present to you during E minus 7. Today is E minus 14, 14 days to Election Day. So as of today, 277,228 active voters have been mailed ballots for the May 21st, 2024 primary election. If voters have not received their ballot by Thursday, by this Thursday, they should visit the elections website or contact the office for a replacement ballot. A reminder that there are 468 different ballot styles for this election, so it's not uncommon for neighbors to have different races on their ballots due to party affiliation or the number of jurisdictions participating in this election. Sometimes that creates confusion, but because of addresses and party affiliations, ballot styles will look different in this primary election. Ballot return dashboards for the primary go live this Friday, so we'll start updating that dashboard online on Friday. You can visit the dashboard today and still view voter registration numbers and dashboards from previous elections. And it's a sort of long URL, and so I will make that available to folks. But you can go to LaneCountyOR.gov and click on Elections and link it from there. The live stream is now live. There's not much going on today, but you can keep an eye on the tentative ballot processing schedule and tune in to observe from the comfort of your own home. That is also linked from our Lane County site. And the first of two Public Logic and Accuracy tests will take place this Thursday, and you can tune in live stream at 10:00 a.m. to observe that process. The other updates, again, our clerk will be here next week to provide an update for you. I know the Board and others always look forward to hearing from Dina directly. Also wanted to note that next Friday is, next Friday, May 17th, is the 10th anniversary of marriage equality in Oregon. The Freedom to Marry in Oregon was established May 19th, 2014, in U.S. District Court Judge Michael McShane's order in the Rummel and Geiger cases. And to commemorate this 10th anniversary, the historic ruling of celebration will be held here in Harris Hall next Friday, May 17th, at 1:00 p.m. At 1:30, there will be speakers, including a keynote from Judge McShane and other community leaders. After those comments, individual wedding ceremonies will be held in courtrooms of the various judges. Cake and beverages will be held, and we're actually providing free marriage ceremonies for any individuals that register. You do need to sign up by Friday, May 10th, so by this Friday, you can contact Sasha Cosio at 541-514-5393 to register. Again, registration closes Friday, May 10th. And the aim of this event is to celebrate access to justice and highlight the importance of ensuring that all individuals, regardless of socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, or family composition, have equal opportunities to participate in marriage ceremonies recognized and protected by law. So looking forward to, in our clerk's office, obviously participating, along with, I know some Commissioners and the courts and other organizations in the community. So I wanted to provide that update for that event next Friday. In addition, and I won't get into detail now because we have presentations, but maybe next week I'll provide more information about some training that we had a cohort of Lane County officials participate in last week, put on by the Othering and Belonging Institute. There's a new book out called Belonging Without Othering, and there's really leading work around sort of the root of human conflict worldwide, and particularly when we look at the conflicts and the war and displacement of individuals in Gaza with Palestinians and Israelis, the wars in Sudan, the conflicts in Ukraine, and sort of the root of human conflict, and how that applies to the conflicts that we see here in our country and here in our local community, in really trying to embrace the idea of creating culture, a culture of belonging, where everyone feels a sense of belonging and able to fully participate and engage in the work that we do, in our case here in Lane County, that we're not sort of creating separations and distinctions and lines between individuals in our organization or community, but really creating a culture where everyone feels a sense of belonging. So that's work that we're doing here in Lane County, and we're really excited about what we believe is at the forefront of our work to create, create that culture of belonging in our organization or community. So share more about that in the coming weeks and months as we continue to evolve our equity work, and just excited about the team that we had go and participate in that training. So that's all, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Great updates. That's all. Those are big things, right? Elections, marriage equality, belonging. Fantastic. I will just note, and apologies if this is a repeat, I might have dismissed it, as you said. The event, the event on the 17th, people can sign up to get married, but people can also take it as an opportunity to renew their vows.
That's true, yes.
There are many, many people who were not able to legally marry in Oregon until that ruling, but married elsewhere or committed to a partner who might like to come and renew vows. And thank you so much to our partners at the Circuit Court and the judges who are generously donating their time to conduct those ceremonies. And it's been really fun and exciting to be part of planning that event and looking forward to it, and I hope folks can join us for that. Next up is Health and Human Services. As much as we love seeing Director Gray and Dr. Warren from Public Health, this is not the greatest reason to have you before us, but you are here to give us an update on what's happening in the community with pertussis outbreak. So welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I know Dr. Warren will be getting the presentation up. We appreciate the instructions right here. I am pinch-hitting a little bit. Normally, we would have one of our public health officers here, but one of them is on the East Coast and the other is embroiled in our epic Go Live today. So we are very excited that our community and the patients in our community health center will have access to the state-of-the-art health record. But day one of Go Live is pretty painful, so if you happen to be able to stop by a clinic and thank our staff this week, they, I'm sure, would appreciate it. Okay, so update on pertussis. I am going to do just the clinical review and then turn it over to Dr. Warren, who will be talking about the public health response and the current status of the outbreak in our community. Okay, so this is just the overview. I'll be covering the what-is-pertussis portion, and then the remainder will be Dr. Warren. Okay, so pertussis, or whooping cough, as many people know it, is a bacterial infection. So unlike many coughing illnesses, which are often viral in nature, this is a bacterial infection. And what happens is the bacteria cause inflammation in the airway that causes irritation, which then causes paroxysms or fits of coughing, often characterized by coughing and feeling like you can't breathe anymore, and then suddenly you gasp. And then with an airway that is maybe inflamed and somewhat constricted, when you gasp and bring that air in rapidly, you end up with a whooping sound. So that is how the disease has been given its name of whooping cough. It is transmitted similarly to other types of, to viral illnesses. So again, it's bacterial, but transmitted in the same way, by droplets from the nose and throat and coughing close contact. The incubation period is longer than for a lot of diseases, so seven to 10 days is average, but you can see there's a pretty significant range, four to 21 days. That means, you know, you can be out a little ways from exposure by the time you begin to show symptoms. And then, once you show symptoms, your infectious period has started, and you can see that the infection can last up to, or the infectious state can last up to three weeks or after the first five days on antibiotics. So we do treat pertussis when we identify it, particularly if we identify it early. The thing about pertussis is often, when you start coughing, you think, oh, I just have a cold. And you don't show up to the doctor until two or three weeks after you have been coughing and it's not getting better. And with pertussis, of course, you may have been spreading pertussis in the community for two or three weeks before you went in to get help. So one of the pieces, we want the community to be aware that there is an outbreak right now, and if you start having fits of coughing or a family member has fits of coughing, we would encourage you to go in and get tested to make sure that you are not, that this is not affecting you and you are not spreading the illness within our community. Vaccines are the best protection that we have. You can see right there, DTAP and T-DAP. The DTAP has a little bit stronger dosing, which gets immunity going, and then the T-DAP vaccines have a little bit lower dosing to renew immunity for folks. So there are, the CDC has the vaccine recommendations. Encourage anyone who has questions to call your doctor or look at this and/or look at the CDC guidelines for vaccination. We do recommend that if you are not up to date, anyone in the community could or should get up to date on your vaccination now. That is particularly important for pregnant women and anyone who anticipates being around babies. Babies are the ones who are most at risk of severe illness, hospitalization, and/or death related to pertussis. So if you will have any contact with a baby, please make sure that you are up to date on your vaccine. And of course, all the things. Cover your mouth when you cough or sneeze, wash your hands, stay home when you're sick, if you have to go out when you're sick. Masking also does help to prevent transmission of illness. Okay, so the pertussis, it is miserable, 100-day cough. And I mentioned the paroxysms of coughing, that it can cause vomiting, and rib fractures are a real thing. I have fractured a rib coughing, and I will tell you that you don't have to stop coughing when you fracture your rib. So it is really miserable, really painful. So even though people who are older are usually not going to be hospitalized from pertussis, some of these symptoms are pretty miserable. And apnea, of course, means to stop breathing. For babies, because their airways are so little tiny, it doesn't take very much inflammation to make it so a baby really struggles to breathe. And that is why we see babies be hospitalized. Some die, some have permanent disability related to pertussis infections, which is why we are so focused on trying to have people up to date on vaccination. The pertussis vaccine is about 80% effective when you get it, and then immunity wanes over time. So we need a very, very high vaccination rate in the community in order to prevent transmission, even amongst vaccinated individuals. And you can see that the numbers on the impact to babies in our community or in the country. Okay, and now I'll turn it over to Dr. Warren.
Thanks. And before we begin, I'm going to bring you some recent data that we had developed yesterday. We tried to make it as, oh, thank you. There's one for Steve as well, as recent as possible. We put the slideshow together last week, and we knew that things would be evolving in this response. And I should also note that this data, these data are correct as of, are always preliminary in terms of reportable diseases until a few years out, and things are actually confirmed. But these data were collected around 4:00 yesterday, and I was in the clinic yesterday at 5:00, and reports were coming in related to daycares as well. So to daycares as well. So these data will change again. We're pretty, we're pretty early likely in this response. So before we review the data, though, I wanted to talk a little bit about reportable and restrictable diseases according to the Oregon Administrative Rules. Reportable diseases are those that clinicians and labs are required to report to public health, either because they're very communicable, or they're very severe, or there's something unknown and remarkable about them, and that we're going to need some additional investigation. Restrictable diseases are those that may trigger exclusion requirements, and that's because of communicability and the impact on health, on the severity of the disease. And pertussis is both of those. It's reportable and also restrictable. And school exclusion, that requires exposed, undervaccinated, or unvaccinated children be excluded from attendance at school or children's facilities for 21 days after last exposure. And that 21 days represents the outermost limit of incubation that Eve mentioned in her presentation. That's where the 21 days comes from. So I wanted to, and be able to kind of contrast here, this is the epidemic curve from our outbreak in 2018. So these two curves are not comparable insofar as this only includes a few weeks of data. This includes data from February to October. So you see many, many more cases. We had 278 pertussis cases at that time. I think it was up to eight schools were involved as well and involved in school exclusion. So just to give you a sense of why this is really important and kind of what it looks like over time, we're in what appears to be something of a kind of slow burn right now with pertussis, or we're very early in the response. As you can see from the, from your handout and that Epi curve, the, we've only had single cases so far primarily. Some days, we have more than one, but the knowing that pertussis is highly infectious, very transmissible, and that not all cases are reported to us. That's another really important piece. We have had folks call from the community that are concerned that they have pertussis and have been told that they're not eligible for testing, or that their provider won't test them. So a lot of the work that we do in the community is working now with providers to ensure that they are aware that pertussis is circulating and that we do have outbreaks now. And we also have what we call community spread, and that is when we have cases in the community that we cannot link together. When we have outbreaks, we're looking at cases that are related and that we assume there is spread within that group. When we are beyond that and can no longer make those, what we call Epi links to those cases, now we know that it's somewhere else in the community as well, that we have not identified. And that's when we raise the level of communication a little bit more, because we know that there is more spread in the community. We have had two schools involved in this, in this response so far. If you look at the data below, you'll see that we don't, we still do not have a huge number of cases. We're more than this now, but still not significantly more. But the idea is that once pertussis gets a hold in a community, it can bloom pretty quickly. We do have other outbreaks across the state as well, where they're also taking similar measures for control. And as I mentioned, those are really prescribed by the Oregon Administrative Rules. So we're talking a little bit here. You'll notice that most of our cases are associated with outbreaks. That means our investigations have been successful in linking them to other cases. So that is, that's a good thing. You see that there are four in households. One of the things that's really important to understand is that children who get pertussis typically get it from family members, primarily parents. I think family, parents and siblings account for up to three quarters of transmission of cases to children. So that is, that's an important piece as well, that we really try to limit spread in families. So there are, as I mentioned, in the state, there are other cases of pertussis. It's not just Lane County. Right now, there are 92 cases that have been reported in the state of Oregon. And how we know that's elevated is because it's compared to 17 from last year. And it is typical of pertussis to be kind of cyclical in three-to-five-year cycles. Ours is a little bit longer, and likely that has a lot to do with having a pandemic in between, and a lot more hygiene around infectious disease. So now this is 2024, and we are kind of in the middle of another pertussis outbreak. So the way that we respond to respiratory outbreaks are through the investigative guidelines. Each of the reportable diseases in Oregon has what we call investigative guidelines that are posted on the Oregon Health Authority website, in case anyone is interested in reviewing those. They're updated regularly with the latest science and by the Oregon Health Authority Public Health Division. So we follow those. It's very prescriptive about the, about the actions that are taken. The investigations are led by a communicable disease nurse and supported by CSWs, our community service workers. In the communicable disease section, they are disease investigation specialists. So it starts with case investigation. You know, they do a lot of, you'll see often when you walk by the communicable disease clinic in our building, there won't, a lot of time be, it won't seem very busy often. We offer sort of a limited range of services in our clinic. Where our nurses are really busy is on the phone. They are on the phone constantly. And disease investigation requires that they are calling, you know, people all day. Some days, these investigations can take a long time to really get to understand who else has possibly been exposed, if this person is, has a positive case. So that case investigation looks at who, what, when, where, how. Like, where have you been? Who have you seen? So this is especially important when we think about congregate settings, like daycares, like schools, long-term care facilities, because the impact on the elderly is not typically significant as it is with babies and children. So long-term care facilities in a respiratory outbreak are often a focus. They are not when it comes to pertussis. We're really focused on schools and daycares. And the goal is to control further spread. We are really looking to reduce the impact of serious disease. And we do that by controlling the spread, implementing these types of measures around exclusion, for example, doing a lot of education about what it means to have pertussis and how you can prevent others from being infected, doing self-isolation at home, also being vaccinated. When we have school exclusions, it's been actually a pretty successful vaccination campaign. Up to half of children in the last, in the 2018 outbreak actually ended up, who were excluded, ended up going for vaccination so that they could resume school at that time. So that has been effective as well. And communicate our findings and communicate about pertussis, part of what we are doing here. But it's also really important to be able to communicate those findings back to the provider community so they are aware of what's happening in the community and just the general public, so they're able to protect themselves as well. So just to talk a little bit more about school exclusion. So you have this background. As I mentioned, these are kind of described by the Oregon Administrative Rules. The goal is to control further spread. The pertussis exclusions are complicated because we do have a long incubation period, as Eve mentioned. So we rarely know that a case is a case as soon as they are actually infected. Those symptoms are, you know, very delayed, and then they get tested late. So there can be quite a lot of exposure that happens then within that timeframe. And those exclusions then are also late. So you may not know that somebody was exposed in a classroom, say, for a week, or maybe even two. So up to 21 days is adding, adding maybe two weeks, maybe even only a week, up to 21 days. And it's not perfect. It's one of the few tools we have, so it's still really important, and it has been effective in the past. But it's certainly not the vaccine we would all love to have for pertussis. We collaborate very closely, of course, with the schools in determining what students have been impacted. The health officer makes the call about what level or like sort of ring of protection we're looking at, depending on the number of cases we have, the length of exposure. This could be the children who are sitting in that classroom with the case. It could be any child that has had a class with that case during the school day. It could be a whole school, depending on how extensive the infection is. That is incredibly rare, and we have not done that in the past. But it really kind of depends a lot on the situation. So the health officer is working really closely, also with the state and our state epidemiologists, to determine the best course of action. We have another call with them, for example, this afternoon, to talk about the response. We also, of course, follow up with families. That piece is really important. We send the letter. The schools make the call to the families about exclusions, but that also gives us an opportunity to include more information about pertussis, where people can get vaccinated, what they can expect for symptoms, our phone number, so they can call us if they have questions or concerns about their family. And I think, yeah, that is the end of my presentation. So I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Warren, Director Gray, to the board. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Warren, I remember 2018 as if it were just yesterday, and I want to really express out loud the leadership that you, Dr. Lutke, Karen Gaffney, displayed during that period of time. OHA did a follow-up analysis in the next year on how well you did, and it's really a good read as to the clinical response to a pretty broad, the largest pertussis outbreak ever in Lane County. And of course, there's a little bit of resistance. I think something like 170 families didn't want to have their kids vaccinated, but ultimately, I think there were only about 50, a little over 50 or so that didn't have their kids vaccinated, and kids, by and large, went to school. It wasn't easy. And I remember the testimony that occurred in our Public Health Advisory Committee and here in this room, from people who are very vehemently against vaccinations. And they talked about their kids, they've never missed a day of school, and now you're telling them they can't go to school. But the response, as delineated by Oregon Health Authority, was tremendous. And I'm, Ms. Morrisey, we're in great hands with leadership as far as going into this and making certain that it doesn't get to the same levels that we saw in 2018. Chair Trigger, we've got a lot going on right here, and this is a good early indication for us all to really let people know vaccination. Vaccination is the way to develop, I think Dr. Lutke's always called it, he's not the only one, herd immunity. Is that the term we use? And you know, Ms. Morrisey, you remember 2018, the pushback on vaccinations. That was kind of a JV game for the 2020 pushback on vaccinations. But it's the same kind of thing. People are very adamant about it, and it's a matter of us having the facts to deliver to them when they come forth with those objections. So once again, thank you and hats off. There's also a wonderful master's thesis written by a U of O student about it. If you've never read that, it really is wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Senega.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Great presentation. I appreciate it. Answering the questions as we go. It was funny, as you're talking about this, I had to clear my throat the entire time. During the presentation, and maybe I missed it, did, is there any correlation from 18 to 24? I mean, what caused it in 18, what caused it now? Do we know that, or is it just, it shows up when it shows up?
Oh, how it starts?
Yeah.
That we were asking, Commissioner. No, I don't think that we are, have the probably capacity, in most cases, to determine sort of a kind of ground zero for a pertussis outbreak. It is an infectious disease that circulates throughout the United States. I think it, one thing, one thing that's sort of the cyclical nature of pertussis outbreaks, I think, is interesting. And immunity does wane from that, from that vaccine. So that could account for why we see these kind of upsurges every few years. I don't know that it's not, it's, I'm not sure if there's a kind of a reason to think that it starts in any particular county either, because we have many counties now that are having, not many. We have several counties in larger areas that are experiencing pertussis outbreaks. So I think it's partly to do with just the nature of the vaccine and how well we've kind of controlled respiratory illnesses in the past several years, that we hadn't had one since 2018, is kind of remarkable.
Yeah, it's a great outlook. As you're mentioning that, and we're looking at numbers, and Commissioner Farr brought up the kids that haven't missed days, it really, really instills the need for continuing our Wi-Fi push, I mean, and our fiber push. This is in metro, which is great, because we have great internet connection. But in some of our rural communities, this could be kids without school for weeks. So, thank you. It's eye-opening.
Absolutely. And I also will point out that following, through and following the pandemic, our pediatric vaccination rates have dropped overall for, I believe, all vaccinations, pediatric vaccinations. So this is also a good opportunity for us to remind our community that these diseases are not gone, and they have very severe outcomes at times. So we, we really encourage, this is the best defense that we have, to prevent outbreaks of serious diseases, and encourage the community, if you have missed a vaccine for you or your child, really, really encourage it now.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Respiratory viruses have been going around my kid's school all year long, it seems. And generally, we see more in the wintertime, the colder months. Is this, is pertussis like that as well? Is there a time of year where it's just more prevalent than other times of the year? I don't know its general cycle, I guess.
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Buck. It's typically a spring virus. The last, the 2018 outbreak began in February. But because it is highly transmissible, it actually lasted for many months through October. So it, while it does have a season in sort of like, single instances, and outbreak status can change that dramatically in how long it will last in a community, which is another reason to really try to control where possible. It does, it does usually help when school is recessed, because that seems to be a place where there's a lot of transmission. So following recession of school, cases typically take a deep dive.
And for my child's school, as soon as I heard it and got the alert from your department, it wasn't shortly thereafter that emails were coming through to parents and newsletters and things like that. So I appreciate all the communication that you have been able to push out, and know that it's actually being received on the other end of the line, at least through the school system. I'm not sure how well that's being done in every school system, but at least in the one where my child goes to, it's working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thing from Vice Chair. I have a few questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. And these are just for the general public, I think. I mean, I'm curious too, but I imagine what we call contact tracing is challenging because of the long incubation period. Do we know the duration of the, like, how durable is the bacterium, like, on surfaces and in the air?
It's typically transmitted through the air. I don't, I don't think that it's very robust to surfaces. I mean, whenever we talk about transmission, it is, you're looking at person to person. It's droplets. It's possible that droplets could be on a surface, but that is not going to be the primary route of transmission by any means.
It's being in the presence of someone infected and giving that bacterium a new host to land on, and-
Correct. But that does, that doesn't say, it can't be. So hand hygiene does continue to be really critical, for sure.
And, I mean, so many people are having allergies now. I'm sure that's confusing symptoms. Like you said, Director Gray, you know, people think, oh, it's just a cold, and they don't realize. So a couple of questions around that. Are there any key ways to differentiate that this is or could be pertussis, to sort of really highlight, I should go get this checked out? And then if so, if there's testing, what's involved in testing? Where can people get that? How does somebody follow up if they're concerned they're infected?
Sure. So the primary symptom onset with pertussis is going to be a cough. For a lot of folks, not everyone experiences illness the same way, but a lot of people with a head cold, you know, you start to feel kind of yucky, and then your sinuses hurt, and then you get a runny nose, and maybe your throat hurts, and then maybe a couple weeks later, a cough comes on, or a week later, a cough comes on. This is going to be characterized by severe coughing at the outset of symptoms. Sometimes it'll start with a runny nose, but the severe cough will come on pretty quickly. And what I, what I would say is, if you are- And what I, what I would say is, if you are noticing that you or a family member is having coughing fits, especially if those coughing fits are leading the individual to run out of breath and have to gasp, those would be really strong indicators that you should go in and ask for testing. There are multiple ways that pertussis can be tested for, and it depends on how long you have had symptoms. So we are communicating with the clinical community to make sure that they understand when to apply which test. And also, like you said, that it is an outbreak in our community right now, and they should be testing for pertussis as an illness. So for our community, just call your doctor and get in if you are concerned. And, and we will continue to work with the clinicians to make sure that the right test is applied at the right time. Anything to add, Dr. Warren?
I, I have noted that Dr. Lutke has also noted that babies don't always have a cough. So if there is any, any symptoms in your, in your baby, young baby, like listlessness or anything like that, I think it's worth following that up, because it's, it's, that was one case where, and it could have a severe consequence. So certainly for babies where you have the most concern and care.
Thank you. 30 years ago, had a kiddo with, with pertussis, and it was wheezing. They were just wheezing. It was very low level, and they seemed fine, but they were wheezing, and we went in, and sure enough, so. And is the, is it a swab test?
Early on, yes.
Okay. And then, I mean, you say, see your doctor. That's becoming harder and harder to find a doctor. And so my next series of questions are around the vaccination. First, you say protection is about 80%, and then it wanes, which all dosing of all medicines, I mean, take ibuprofen for a headache, the impact wanes. It's a different timeline, right? But what is the recommendation? Should all ages be vaccinated for pertussis? Or is the focus on kids and babies?
So the CDC has not come out with really clear guidelines for adults, aside from women who are pregnant. There are very clear pertussis guidelines for kids, and I don't have the immunization schedule memorized, but it includes babies, kids, and then a early adolescent booster dose. Most people, when they get the tetanus vaccine every 10 years, are getting what is called a T-DAP vaccine, which includes pertussis in it. There is a vaccine out there that is just tetanus. We would recommend, if you are due for your tetanus booster, ask and make sure that your doctor doesn't just give you the tetanus. Get the T-DAP, and then you will be protected against pertussis every 10 years. Definitely, though, every pregnancy, it is recommended to get an update for your pertussis vaccine. And many, many OB providers recommend, make sure grandma and grandpa and aunts and uncles and others who will be around the baby have had an update to their vaccine. So that is, that's a population we focus on a lot as adults, but otherwise, we don't have clear guidance from the CDC.
Great, thank you. And then finally, similarly, vaccine only available in doctors? Do we, pharmacies?
Pharmacies do.
Based health centers?
Yes.
Yeah, pharmacies, Carrie. And I, I myself get regular updates from Rite Aid about all of the vaccines that are available to me. So I think that's, it's readily available in the community.
And do our school-based health centers have them as well? Is that something they can do?
The community health centers?
School-based.
Oh, I'm school-based. Um, there, I, I know for, for, in the Springfield School-Based Health Center, because that is run by our community health centers, we do have. And typically, I don't have, not had conversations with, personally with those school-based health centers, but they typically carry most vaccines. And would, I would, I'm sure the nurses are in contact with them and, and ensuring that they have access now.
Great, thank you very much. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair. If I may just call out a name, is an intern from, from Lane County Public Health that wrote the wonderful thesis on the, it was Rhian Levesque, perhaps remember Rhian? She spent, I think, close to a year interning. I didn't meet her, but I've read the thesis, and it really is extraordinary.
Thank you for sharing that.
Anything else from staff on this item?
I don't.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for coming. And I'm sure if we need another update, if things are not progressing in the right direction, we'll have you back. Great, thank you.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Next up is also an informational item only with no action by the board. This is our regular update from our Human Services Division Homeless Response System. Presentation from Kate Budd, our Human Services Manager, James Yule, our Homelessness and Community Action Manager, and we'll welcome, I think, for the first time presenting before us Andrea Braniff, the Coordinated Entry and Outreach Supervisor with Human Services. So welcome all of you. Thank you so much for being here. Give you a minute to settle in, and, and then I'll kick it over to Kate Budd to queue up the presentation and get us started on the item.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us this morning. I am Kate Budd. I'm the Human Services Division Manager. I'm joined here today with James Yule, who is our Homelessness and Community Action Manager, and Andrea Braniff, who is our Coordinated Entry and Outreach Supervisor. Very fortunate in that when I was in James's role, James was in Andrea's role, and then we have just moved up in our roles to be able to serve Lane County. So today, we are here to share with you a number of topics. One, to share with you the end result of the, the rightsizing efforts due to the waning COVID funds that I spoke with you all last time we were together. Then we'll go into updates around All In, which is the governor's executive order funding, followed by an update on Bridges on Broadway, which was a motel that Lane County purchased over three years ago, firstly, to serve wildfire survivors, and then later on, to serve folks who had higher health challenges and needed to be in a safe shelter due to COVID. And then lastly, to provide an update on an All In initiative focused on encampment outreach and share with you the outcomes of our first pilot projects. So firstly, you may recall that the Human Services Division was facing an artificial inflation of funding in the last few years. And we are seeing our overall amount of COVID funds wane simply because they are expiring. And we are also seeing that there was rerouting of emergency shelter funds through Oregon Housing and Community Services this current fiscal year. And so we didn't have as, as many dollars flowing through Lane County. We also received All In funds, but those funds wouldn't be able to supplant existing funds or fill in gaps that are being realized as we move into the next fiscal year. And then lastly, there were additional dollars related to a number of different funding sources that we receive that were added due to COVID that are also going away in the next fiscal year. And so we needed to reduce funding by approximately $4 million. I came to you a few months ago, and the advice from the Commissioners was to firstly look at where additional investments have been made across different program types. So for example, All In made investments in street outreach and emergency shelter. And so there might be opportunities to reduce funding, but know that there would be the same level of service or similar levels of service due to All In. Secondarily, the advisement was to focus on outcomes. And if there were programs that were not meeting their outcomes, and particularly very low in achieving their outcomes, that those programs would not move into the next fiscal year. Just an illustration here of the, the significant COVID funds that the Human Services Division received. If you look at 2023 and 2024, bar chart there, the dark blue indicates the COVID-related funding that the Human Services Division utilized for our programming. So as we approached utilizing the advice of this commission and moving forward with sunsetting programs for the next fiscal year, we wanted to be very clear with our agencies that should they have one program that, that was sunsetting or have a reduction in funding, that it was in no way a referendum of the quality of the agency's programs. There are, the, the majority, honestly, of the agencies that Lane County Human Services Division works with has multiple contracts with Lane County. And so perhaps one contract may not continue, but there would be other contracts that are with that agency. In some cases, Human Services Division may no longer be contracting with that agency, but other divisions in the department or even other divisions within Lane County would continue to contract with those entities. So moving forward, the programs that will be sunsetting and would not receive a 2025 contract include the Relief Nursery and Pearl Buck Center. The, the primary reason with those two agencies is that there was an updated community needs assessment for 2023. And that community needs assessment identified the top three priorities for Lane County neighbors that are low income. And these programs are funded based on the previous community needs surveys, in some cases, numerous previous community needs survey. And so now that we have a new one, there's an opportunity to do another request for proposal that is in line with those top three community needs that were identified through that community needs assessment. And so these programs can apply for additional funding. The, the important piece that, that we had shared is that their current program may not necessarily be one of those top three needs, but it may be that they can apply for a different program or kind of a different approach. And of course, there will be opportunities for other programs to apply as well. The next two programs are emergency shelter and transitional housing through Looking Glass. Those two programs, firstly, they are part, their focus, the emergency shelter and transitional housing, is being funded through other funds. So All In, for example, is funding emergency shelter beds through, through those dollars for youth specifically. And then the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project funding through HUD is funding transitional housing and rapid rehousing. And so because this type of programming was being funded in a different way, it made sense to reduce those contracts, or in the case of transitional housing, to end that program. We also saw that the, the outcomes for those programs were not strong. In fact, the, the vacancy rate for the emergency shelter is basically that there was, that 3% of the beds were filled during the last fiscal year, which is not high, obviously. It is important for beds to exist for youth, but of course, our focus is we want those beds to be full. And so this, you know, helps to reduce the number of beds available, because there may be indication that they're not necessarily needed in the community. We also ended street outreach programs, four of them specifically. And the reasoning there is that All In is providing street outreach through different programs. And so each of these will be sunsetting. We are going to do an All In Street Outreach Request for Proposal in the next few weeks. And so any of these programs, as well as other programs in the community, could apply for funding through All In. Next, we have a very small prevention program that will be sunsetting. Prevention is another program that's being supported by All In funds. And this is not the only prevention program that Catholic Community Services has that is funded through Lane County. And so on some level, we're just condensing the prevention programs that they have and then reducing by a small amount of, of dollars, knowing that All In is providing far more prevention spots in the community. We also are sunsetting the FUSE Case Management and Housing Readiness Program through Shelter Care. This is a rapid rehousing program. We're very fortunate in that there are private dollars that also support this effort. And so those private dollars are going to help to just tier down the availability of rapid rehousing throughout the next fiscal year, so that by June 30 of 2025, we can sunset that program altogether. Among all the different, there are actually six different FUSE programs. This was the program where we saw the least strong outcomes, and so it made sense to us to sunset this program. And then 2-1-1 Information, there is similar work happening with 2-1-1 through the All In efforts, and so it made sense to just continue to, to focus on the All In funding for 2-1-1. And then lastly, Dust to Dawn. We are hoping that the state, through their most recent legislative allocation for emergency shelter, will support a number of the emergency shelter programs here in the community. And so we're working with the state to have them allocate their shelter funds through Lane County for the next fiscal year, and Dust to Dawn would be one of those priorities. And so what that means then is that the, kind of the, the overall Human Services Division funding wouldn't need to support Dust to Dawn. It would be those dedicated dollars coming from the state. So just to also share, again, we'll be doing a number of requests for proposals. And so in no way does it mean that, that all of those programs may end. It just simply means they have an opportunity to apply and, you know, be in a competitive environment with other applications. We were also very fortunate to partner with the Lane Community Health Council, who allocated approximately $2 million to a number of different homeless service programs within the community. And so that was a, a great partnership opportunity with them to be able to support programs going into the next fiscal year. So I'm happy to take questions before we move on.
To the board, any questions on the presentation so far? Commissioner Farr.
No questions, Elizabeth. But thanks for the work that went into this. This is no small amount of work that brought these numbers to us, and you do it with a very sober face. I think some of the things that you pointed out, the transitions, for instance, and, and supplanting by other funding, is important to understand that something that you said that, that is no way a referendum of the effectiveness of the agency. And that's absolutely the case. These are some of our best agencies, we're talking about right here. We do some of the very, very, very best work in Lane County. So thank you for bringing this, and thank you for the, all of, all of the tremendous thought that went into this, all of the tremendous work that went into this, what seems like a relatively brief presentation, but I know you worked long and hard on that, you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. And thank you for emphasizing we're not defunding agencies. It's programs, and in many cases, those programs will continue with different funding. Thank you for that important point. Right?
Thank you. And as we transition, I, I do want to just recognize all our partner agencies through Lane County. The fact is, we could not have created the COVID response that Lane County bolstered during the height of the pandemic without their support. They are incredibly important and have done enormously positive and impactful work. And so we're thankful for, for each and every one of them.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Kate mentioned, I'm going to touch on several different updates.
As Kate mentioned, I'm going to touch on several different updates. So, you know, if questions come up as I go through sections, please let me know, and I will answer those for you. So to start with, just wanted to, and this is a recap, I know, for most of you, wanted to talk about the outcomes that were met in round one of All In. So as a part of the emergency declaration, the governor, you know, provided outcomes that were to be met by January 10 of 2024. So on the left-hand side there, you will see the outcomes that were met as of January 10, 2024. For those of you who have seen these numbers before, they may look slightly different, particularly in the rehousing section. At the time, we did not realize we had actually hit 100%, so that was the one section that was below. Through some great work from our HMIS data team, the Homeless Management Information System, they were able to work with providers to identify some data entry issues that had led to that number not being accurate. So it turned out that we did, in fact, meet that outcome. On the right-hand side, you'll see this is as of Friday, last Friday. As the governor has made those round one funds available to be spent through to January 30th, 2025, there are round one providers that are continuing to provide services. So we have seen the homeless prevention and the rehousing program numbers just grow. With the emergency shelter beds, we're not adding additional shelter beds at this time, but we're strengthening those that were created and working to address staffing needs in those shelters. So very impressive outcomes, obviously, and this really, I think, is a testament to those providers in our community that Kate alluded to in her presentation. So really impressive numbers and work that they've done. So as we move into round two, there's some key differences, and then there's also some similarities. So the governor's office has made it clear that round two funding is really focused on sustaining the efforts that were made in round one in the areas of homelessness prevention, emergency shelter, and rehousing. Along with that, there has been the creation of some new program types to help sustain that. So the first one is Long-Term Rent Assistance, or LTRA. LTRA will operate similar to a housing voucher program in that it will provide a housing subsidy to help those round one households remain stable in housing. So the priority are households that were rehoused in round one. Those households will be assessed to determine their ongoing need for a subsidy through LTRA. If it is found that there are not enough round one households to meet the outcome goal for round two, we would then move to new households being referred via the coordinated entry system. And those households would be entered in housing and would be provided supportive services to help them stabilize while in housing. The second new program type is unit access. We are primarily using unit access to help fund the landlord liaison work that's been done and part of the risk mitigation work that I know you all have been included in those conversations around the work that's happening there. That also is how we will be funding our 2-1-1 work to help get those households accessing coordinated entries that they then can be eligible to receive referral to the LTRA program. And then ORI, the Oregon Rehousing Initiative. Initially, the state had been calling it SPA, so you might have heard that, it was the special programs allocation. That may not be completely accurate, but either way, it's called ORI now. And this is a program type that we are hoping to use to fund our diversion work. So the work, the light-touch intervention to be able to get a household into permanent housing with, you know, as little intervention as possible. And we've seen great success with our diversion work, both through the All In-funded diversion as well as in the previous year before All In. I'm going to touch on it a little bit on another side, but we are currently in conversations with OHCS around how we can make sure that the diversion program is going to fit within the parameters that they've made for ORI. A real key, important piece in round two that a lot of folks are very happy to hear is that we will now be able to serve sheltered households as well as unsheltered households. So in round one, we were not able to actually enroll households in permanent housing programs through All In that were in shelters. That will change in round two, which will be really helpful as we look at our larger system and moving folks out of shelter and into housing. So these are the funding allocations for each of those program types that I mentioned. You know, I think the primary difference in round two funding is just there's been a pretty significant reduction in funds for street outreach, but other than that, the funding for the other program types is comparable to round one. So next steps around round two, as I noted, providers are able to continue to use round one funds through June of 2025. We are encouraging providers, though, to spend that money. You know, it'll help us be able to determine if there's other areas that funds could be allocated to. So we are continuing to have those conversations with providers to spend those funds, although there has been an extension in how long they can be spent. With the round two emergency shelter funding, those funds cannot be used to create new shelter beds. So again, it's sustaining the shelter beds that were created in round one. Emergency, along with that, emergency shelter providers have received round two allocations that are going to help build their housing navigation support. So be able to have staff working directly with shelter residents to get into housing, which has been a piece, you know, that the shelter providers have conveyed to our staff that it's been a challenge to meet those housing-focused goals when they don't have the staffing available to do that really intensive housing navigation. So we're excited to see that happening. The round two homelessness prevention is already up and running and already spending funds. And then the LTRA, the Long-Term Rent Assistance, is currently being developed. So we have our community plan submitted to the state, and we're just waiting to hear approval from them and then hoping to have those programs start July 1. As I noted, we're continuing to have conversations with OHCS regarding the development of the diversion program under the ORI funding. I think what we're running into is Lane County is relatively upfront with diversion work. I mean, it's a national model that has seen a lot of success. And I would say the state of Oregon hasn't broadly adopted diversion. So I think it's just that OHCS really kind of needs to be educated on what diversion is, and we've had great conversations with them about it. And I'm hopeful that they will, you know, find a way for us to be able to fit it within the parameters of ORI, because it's really a critical piece of our larger service system. Round two outcomes have yet to be determined, so those will be set as contracts are executed. And then we will continue the, and expand on the work of the Multi-Agency Collaborative Group, or the MAT Group. You know, I think, I've said this before, but I think this has been one of the primary ways that I've worked in this community on homelessness for a while now, and I think through the MAT Group, this is the most collaboration I've seen amongst providers, municipalities, folks with lived experience that contribute to the MAT Group. And it's really been exciting, and I know Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Buck have been present for some of those meetings. It's been really exciting to see our community of providers and other stakeholders really come together to work on a shared goal. So I'm excited to see that work continue as we move through round two of All In. Before I jump to non-All In stuff, is there anything related to either round one or round two of All In that you'd like to ask?
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Just two questions. The first one may or may not be specifically around round two, but you have mentioned in these slides that we are still awaiting OHCS's allocation for shelter bed coverage, and we have our priorities listed. And I was wondering if you have gotten any indication as to when they're going to come out with this, because of course, we're doing budgeting and you're doing your division budgeting, and we have no idea what the allocation might be. Have you gotten any information from them as to when that might be forthcoming?
We have not, no. I know that they're well aware of, you know, the fact that budgeting is happening across the state, and there hasn't been a definitive date. The fact is, we're waiting for allocations for all the different funding sources through OHCS at this point.
So that's obviously a challenge, and I know that our partners, our community partners, are really aching to know for their budgets too, because they don't know whether they can keep their employees on and for how long and what they're going to be doing. It's really creating a bottleneck, so hopefully that will come out very shortly. The other question I had is on the round one funds that can go through, I think you mentioned June 25. Do we know how much is left to be expended? And in what happens if we think there's going to be money left over, what happens to that?
And just to clarify, it's June 30, 2025, so June of '25, not June 25 of 2024.
Oh, for round one?
The round one can, funds can be spent, yeah, through the biennium.
Okay.
As far as funding.
That answers that, then. I would assume that that would be all expended by that time next year. Great, thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I'm going to be really brief. You gave us a short presentation on a huge impact. You know, it's the impact of All In Lane County is really bigger than we can even talk about when the governor's talking about it, the directors are talking about it, and Director Gray, you and Kachina both have been at the LGAC meetings where the efforts in Lane County are highlighted. And you say we're out ahead on some of the programs. Everybody recognizes that, and everybody looks to Lane. I say everybody, but a lot of people are looking to Lane County for the leadership that's being provided here through the All In program. And I really want to talk about diversion just ever so briefly. You mentioned it, and you mentioned that it's a nationwide model that's not really been fully adopted in Oregon, and OHCS has not really quite caught on to it, but I think we're beginning here in Lane County to educate people on the effectiveness, what you, James, have called a light touch, give, given the lightest touch on people's conditions to help them to stay in housing. And we've had tremendous results with it. I'm not going to belabor that with my voice right now, but the diversion, and we're putting more money into diversion, for a relatively small amount of money, people can be kept into house, in housing, whereas rapid rehousing can be very, very costly and also very impactful on the, obviously, on the families that are, that lose housing. So tremendous work's being done, it's being recognized, and continue to be a leader in Lane County, so does all of Oregon, and ultimately, OHCS can be a participant in what really is a tremendous program. And I can't say enough about it, and it really is a, I mean, it's just a milestone in the history of providing care for homeless and potentially homeless people in Lane County. It really is a milestone. So bravo, thank you.
I will just ask, I don't see other Commissioners, the, I am assuming, I don't know if you can speak to this, that the goals, so when you show us the goals for round one so far, a reminder that that timeline includes just receiving the funding and standing the programs up and bringing the MAT Group together and all that sort of infrastructure for how to spend the money. So remarkable, not just that the goals were met and in most cases exceeded, but I imagine maybe we'll be adjusting our goals for round two, because maintaining and growing existing programs doesn't take as long as launching a new one and then growing, right? So is that likely true? Any prognostication about that?
You know, I think the first year was really focused on growing, and then this year is focused on maintaining and sustaining. And so we're moving from, for example, the emergency shelter outcome being to create new beds, now we're looking at how do we, you know, as an outcome, exit 30% of the folks from the shelter into permanent housing? How do we increase the income of folks who are in the shelter? And so it's really about just increasing the stability of the folks who are engaged in the programs and helping to move folks toward permanent housing, which is the overall goal of All In and all of its array of programming.
Great, and I think that answers my other question or comment, which is, you said one of the differences is that it was all focused on unsheltered and unhoused, and that round two will include folks who are currently sheltered. So I'm guessing how that will be function, how will that be functionally different other than there's a bigger number of people eligible to be spending these dollars on? Sort of answered it, but I'd love to hear if you want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it changes our ability to offer, so, you know, using the diversion program as an example, you know, diversion is really a successful way, and the name really kind of alludes to diverting someone from needing to use an emergency shelter, so it's when they kind of show up at the door of an emergency shelter. Obviously, sometimes that may mean they stay a night or two while they're getting stable. In round one, we would then not have been able to help a household that had stayed a night at an emergency shelter with diversion funds. So with round two being able to do that, we really can utilize diversion for what it's meant to be used for, which is really all, for all households that are experiencing homelessness. And so it really just changes our ability to fully serve the scope of households experiencing homelessness.
That's fantastic, and I, yeah, go ahead.
Just one more thing that I would add, because although all of you know this, I think it's worth repeating every time we talk about these efforts. We have incredibly successful teams and community providers when it comes to putting everything on the table, to understand how to house and also how to maintain people in housing and stabilize them in housing. And we continue to not have places to house people. So that really is the primary barrier and bottleneck to us being able to expand upon the results. And All In is the housing, and particularly affordable housing, that is available in our community, and like I said, you all know that, but I just, I think it bears repeating.
Thank you for that, and a pin in that, I think, I'm looking over your shoulder to our administrator, I think in June, we're getting a report back on the Affordable Housing Action Plan. Does that sound right? Okay, thank you. Great, and I, this is just so exciting, and I know it's great. Commissioner Farr often talks about how, you know, the governor and other counties in the state look to us, but I have to believe that some of the reasons around two was structured the way it is, is in response to showing what we could do in round one, that we are part of building this ship as we sail it and helping the state understand what is, where the efficacy lies and what the results are when you actually fund a thing. And then I just think it's such a great sign that they're willing to continue evolving based on the successes and not just keep delivering the same dollars for the same things. It's great to be part of that, thank you. Sorry, your next, next phase. Oh, Commissioner Buck. I just wanted to add on that. Just as a reminder, you know, a big difference, I think, between round one and round two is also the growth of the data analytics that we've been able to do over the course of the year. So it's not just we're growing everything, we're really focusing on the ones that actually had concrete, positive, high outcomes, and being able to, you know, continue to fund those and really being able to see the ones that weren't working as well. And without the original resources, you know, to fully flesh through those programs was a challenge, and we've been able to do that now. So continuing that great work is another evolution of round two.
Thank you, yeah, and that just points up the, when you say that, you know, programs that aren't working, it's, are or aren't working toward the outcome of getting people permanently and stably housed, it doesn't mean they're not also working in other ways to get people temporarily sheltered or what have you, like, so terrific, thank you.
Patrick, if I may, just add one thing that Mr. Yule said, and that is, and you can elaborate on this sometime other than right now, but you see in the greatest level of coordination of efforts that you've ever seen. And I'm, I can echo that, in the years, I've never seen the kind of coordination that you've been able to generate through the All In program. It's just, it really is phenomenal, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's a testament, or it's why we've been so successful, I think, is through that partnership. So going to jump to talking about River Avenue, the Navigation Center, and give some updates on the work that's happening there. So just as a reminder for you all, the River Avenue Navigation Center was opened in September of 2022. It's a 75-bed, low-barrier emergency shelter that was created in partnership with the city of Eugene. It's operated by Equitable Social Solutions, that's the provider, and it follows what's a bridge model. So the idea is that folks can enter into shelter to then work on kind of collecting the documents and the other things they're going to need to be able to get into housing. So oftentimes, it's working to get ID for them, you know, verifying benefits if required for the program they're being referred to, and really just helping them to stabilize, to focus on that housing navigation work. When we first opened the NAV Center, all 75 beds had been dedicated to households that were on top of the centralized waiting list. So the waiting list we use for coordination. So the waiting list we use for coordinated entries. So those folks at the top of that list have deemed to be, have the highest vulnerability in our community via assessment score. And then they also meet HUD's definition of chronically homeless. So they've been homeless straight for a year or more, or have had multiple episodes in the last few years, and then also have a disabling condition. So it's really the most vulnerable households in our community. As we started to work through that program model, we realized that to be able to increase referrals and to ensure that beds were filled and working with City of Eugene and Equitable Social, Social Solutions, we determined that the best way to move forward was to prioritize the 25 of those beds for the folks at the top of the centralized waitlist. And then have the other 50 be open for direct referral via our new-ish Shelter Finder website. So the Shelter Finder website that I, I believe you all have received information on helps folks locate shelters that have beds available in our community. Now, when someone goes to the NAV Center, if they see that a bed is open at the NAV Center, they can click on a link and submit an application to be sheltered there. And so then that comes through Andrea's team and we work to get those folks sheltered. So it's been an improvement where we have seen just being able to keep those beds filled without sacrificing really the intent of the program, which was to, to prioritize, prioritize those highly vulnerable households. Since its opening, 302 unduplicated individuals have served or have been served. And then we've seen 61 of those individuals exited to permanent housing. So this graph is intended to just give you an idea of the population that the NAV Center is, is serving. So the NAV Center is serving, you know, one of the higher percentages of vulnerability, of vulnerable clients in our community, as I mentioned. Higher vulnerability for the purpose of this slide is defined as a client that has a coordinated entry assessment score of 10 or above. So the higher the score on that assessment, the higher their vulnerability is. Really, anything over a score of seven or eight is considered pretty highly, highly vulnerable. 10 or higher would be, would be very vulnerable. So as you can see, the Fuse Shelter on the far left, which makes sense, they are the shelter in our, in our system that serves the, the most highly vulnerable folks. But the Navigation Center is right up there in the top four. And I think that's important, especially when we're looking at outcomes and when we're comparing the outcomes of various shelters. It really is important to look at the population that's being served by that shelter. And through the NAV Center, we're, we're, like I said, serving some of those highest vulnerability populations. And then additionally, the four shelters on the left all receive referral from coordinated entry. And that's really the way that we're able to route the most vulnerable folks directly to shelter is by being able to refer them through coordinated entry. So it's been a really beneficial way to ensure those folks are getting connected to those services. So as we look at the data from the first, I think the last time you received this presentation, you, you were given the data set on the left. The data set on the right is, is from then on. You know, so we're seeing improvement across, you know, all of the key outcome measurements. So we're seeing an increase in, in households being exited to permanent housing, a decrease in those being exited to places not meant for human habitation, and then a decrease in those being transferred to other shelters. You know, they, the Navigation Center is still hovering just under that 30% exit to permanent housing mark, which is the, the goal outcome. But we're pleased to see that they're, they're making progress and, and, you know, they've had some changes in, in leadership and some changes in staffing. And they've really invested in a lot of their, their partnerships, which I'm going to touch on in the next slide. So they've been doing really important work and making these changes. So I'm, I'm confident that we'll continue to see these outcome measurements continue to increase over the next six months. As I mentioned, some of the improvements and increased client services that they've made, they now have several partnerships. You'll see, you know, a variety of, of community providers on the left that now are either coming directly to the NAV Center to provide services in their common area. Or NAV Center staff are able to take folks and transport them to these services. And so we're seeing, you know, medical, mental health, access to cell phones, to be able to work on employment things and working with St. Vincent de Paul and the Second Chance Renters Program to ensure that they are able to, you know, rent and, and be able to be successful. And, and that's really a, a program that landlords in our community have grown to really value and appreciate. And so if they can see that someone has passed that class, it really helps to, to get them considered for housing. And then additionally on the right, you know, it's really been a great partnership, again, with the City of Eugene, but also the community and neighborhood associations in the area. So Equitable Social Solutions has done an excellent job in the last six months to a year, really partnering with the River Road and Santa Clara Neighborhood Associations. And so in weekly, I know Glenn Porter, the, the director, has said sometimes daily conversations with those neighbors and neighborhood associations, just to make sure that they, being the NAV Center, are being good neighbors and, and addressing issues as they come up. Lane County staff have also been onsite at the NAV Center very regularly, just to see how things are going, to monitor the program and to provide that technical assistance to the NAV Center. And again, you know, through the partnership with City of Eugene, there's a quarterly check-in with our staff, City of Eugene staff, Equitable Social Solutions staff, where they just talk about how things are going. And, and through all of these efforts, you know, we've seen not only the increase in, in movement on their outcomes, but also just a, a, a center that's, that's really flourishing. And then, you know, I've spent time there and, and enjoy every time I go there, just seeing the, the culture and really the environment that's being created. So it's, it's been impressive to see those improvements happen. Touching on, on bridges over Broadway, or bridges on Broadway, I always call it bridges over Broadway. So just a reminder for you all, that is formerly, the former Red Lion Hotel located on East Broadway. It's acted as an emergency shelter for the last three and a half years, preview, or first operated as a shelter for the Holiday Farm survivors. And then as those folks transitioned into housing, we then moved to serving households experiencing homelessness. And it was households that were meeting the medical vulnerability related to COVID. So it was folks that, many of which had been previously housed in the St. Vincent de Paul COVID hotel shelters, as well as some of the other congregate shelter, or not, other non-congregate shelters we'd created as a response to COVID. That building has been purchased and, and will be being remodeled and developed into a 57-unit permanent supportive housing program. The shelter operations closed as of April 19th to allow Homes For Good to do that remodeling. Really wanted to highlight just the amazing work and again, just going back to collaboration. So six months, so back in October, we started the transition planning to ensure that we were doing everything we could to not have any residents of the Bob return to homelessness. So we began a weekly case conferencing with Homes For Good staff, Lane County staff, other community partners, to just start talking about these 42 individuals that were there. And through those conversations and through that planning, we saw great success. You know, 17 of the 42, so 41%, were able to exit into a rental in the community. We transferred 13 other folks to another shelter in the community. Six folks got into housing, and I think the most important piece is, we, we, you know, we never want to see any folks exit to, to, back to homelessness, but we, we saw a very small number. And all of the folks, those two included, were offered at least one, and in most situations, two different shelter options if they wanted it. And so there were, there were no residents that were not provided some at least shelter option at the time of exit. So just really highlights again, the amazing work that I think when we all come together and collaborate, we can do. And some of the keys to that, we started early, we started six months in advance, so we knew the closing date was coming and we knew it was going to take time to coordinate services for these highly vulnerable folks. We did that through case conferencing, through partnerships with, with Homes For Good, and then just through regular coordination and communication. So outside of the case conferencing meetings, Andrea and myself were in regular communication with all the partners. And then really want to just thank the other shelter providers in the community that were very open to facilitating transfers into their shelters. So we were able to, for those folks that we could not identify permanent housing, we were able to transition them into other shelters into the community to ensure that they were not returning to the street. And that partnership with those other shelter providers was critical to making that happen. Questions on either the NAV Center or the Bob?
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. On the Navigation Center, I noticed that there was an increase of no-exit interviews. And I was just wondering if we thought we might know why that was occurring? I'm, I'm guessing people can just leave if they want to leave and they don't have to meet with you and tell you why, which is of course challenging. I, I like to see the increase in permanent supportive housing or, you know, permanent housing of some sense. But it's hard when you lose the piece of crucial information about why they just exit and may not be, may or may not be getting care in another location.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think that's a, a data piece that we could dig more into and I'd, I'd want to talk to ESS about, you know, if they're seeing patterns. But I think, like you said, with it being a shelter where folks can come and go, sometimes they just may not show back up that night and, and we unfortunately don't know what happened to them. But I, I can certainly follow up with ESS and see if they're, you know, seeing any reason why that might be, might be the case at an increased level.
Right, and my other question is surrounding the clinic care onsite at the NAV Center. Is that part of the Peace Health folks coming in that was on one of the slides? Or are, are those, are we still having the clinic? Are those county folks coming in? Because we were going to have a room offsite that I think everybody was working to have some onsite clinic care.
I agree, and I think our greatest challenge right now is just that the medical providers, you know, whether it's the CHC or others, that the capacity just isn't there to be able to offer onsite medical support traditionally in the way that it had originally been intended. And we're very fortunate that Peace Health provides in-home health aids for folks who are there at the Navigation Center. And so that's the, the reference that was provided. And then if someone's in need of greater health support, then we would engage, whether it was with a community health center or, you know, the, the individual's preference, you know, regarding urgent care. And so at this point, we haven't been able to bring in that traditional medical health care that we had hoped. But as capacity continues to build, we're still pursuing that.
What is the capacity limitation? What's the challenge there?
Do you want me to speak to the CHC?
Sure.
Okay, so, you know, I think on the CHC side, we are growing extraordinarily rapidly. And we are trying to staff our full-time clinics first, the South Lane Clinic as well as West 11th. And trying to identify how many people are at the Navigation Center who require medical care on a daily basis? Does it make sense to have someone stationed there? Does it make more sense to offer transportation to individuals who are at the Navigation Center to get them to a clinic location where we can see kind of the number of patients that we need to see in a day in order to better serve the needs of our community? So I think those are the barriers in terms of having primary care onsite. But home health is, the fact that home health can come to shelters, which was not true pre-COVID. So, you know, of, we think about just the little, the little things that we are appreciative of as a result of COVID, this is one of them, that's a really big deal. And we just met with the Lane Council of Governments last Friday, they have an interest or an openness to sending people to do assessments in the Navigation Center to try and get people qualified for services. We see a lot of people on the streets who really should be qualified for other services and other benefits and have not been hooked up to those yet. So the more connections we can make in that regard, it will be better for our community. But from the primary care perspective, I, I think that, that we need to evaluate more whether onsite services makes the most sense or whether investing in transportation does and welcoming those folks into existing clinics.
I appreciate that, I'm very much in favor of home healthcare being able to come out, although Peace Health is having their challenges with their home healthcare nurses at the moment. And so I don't actually feel very comfortable that, that is going to be a long-lasting provided service. I, I just don't know, and that, that concerns me. But it is important to have the assessment. I, I would feel more comfortable if we had our Lane County providers coming out there on a regular basis, just because I would know that that would be ongoing and we would have a different commitment level. But whether we transport them to a clinic or have it onsite, whatever your analysis is, I would look, I would look forward to that because I just think it's so critical that we do have care for those folks. I think sometimes it seems like easier if somebody's onsite because people can come and go and getting them to an appointment can be somewhat more challenging. But I, again, I look forward to that assessment and bringing that back and understand the challenges of trying to grow the CHC staffing as well, thank you.
Question about bridges on Broadway, although this may be more for our administrator or for Director Gray. Project Turnkey, are there still project turnkey funds at the state? And if so, do we, have we, are we working to identify potential projects and look to secure funding to do more project turnkey work?
At this point, there isn't activity to offer a new request for proposal for turnkey funds. It was a partnership between Oregon Community Foundation and Oregon Housing and Community Services. And I believe that there were at least three RFPs for turnkey funds. And I didn't hear much conversation around turnkey in this last legislative session. So I know that there was a pretty fantastic report that was released around just the many successes of the turnkey projects. And so it would certainly be celebrated if they decided to release another funding opportunity, but to my knowledge, it's not on the horizon at this point.
Thank you.
So diving in just a little deeper into more narrow scope for encampment outreach, which Kate mentioned, was a pilot project from our All In Street Outreach implementation. We'll talk about our efforts in our community and some of our outcomes thus far. Encampment outreach is really a, like a holistic intervention that's designed to serve the entire community of an encampment. So it's very targeted to one identified encampment, which we define locally in our community from five to 30 residents residing in tents, built structures, vehicles, so all experiencing that unsheltered homelessness and living in a community with one another. Encampment outreach differs from our traditional street outreach implementation because traditional street outreach is more designed to serve the entirety of a region with less intensive services and more individualized basis. Where encampment outreach is a targeted strategic approach to one identified encampment. We also have law enforcement activities implemented in our community, which looks like our community service officers and then our camp removal. Encampment outreach is really a project that's designed to align the goals of both of our street outreach providers and our homeless services network and then our other community stakeholders and also the voice of the participants themselves living amongst the encampment. So it works to identify an encampment, provide intensive street outreach services, move those households into shelter or permanent housing, and then works to also plan, create a plan to improve the site for the community at the end of it. So encampment, street outreach is, also differs from traditional street outreach because prior to implementation of engaging a site, we work to really engage a multidisciplinary team of folks. So it's our street outreach providers, it's our law enforcement, it's our businesses, it's the neighborhood, and it's also, and importantly, the voice of the participants who are living in the encampment themselves. So it's all of those stakeholders coming together to create a strategic and targeted plan on how we can have a constructive response to an encampment and move those folks into a positive outcome. The street outreach provider and encampment outreach is also, takes sort of a deeper dive into services, so really provides wraparound services to the households who are residing within an encampment. So that's connection to vital documents, medical care, all services with the primary goal of moving folks into shelter or permanent housing. The outreach project themselves are also able to provide some maintenance to the site. So they can also bring in garbage cans and hand washing stations and like hygiene and toilets to ensure that the site starts to become clean and safe for all involved while they're working with folks to move them into permanent placements. So because encampment outreach is really strategic and is a holistic approach, we work really hard to advertise and to communicate that this project is not a overnight fix for encampments, but really is a process. The process starts with engaging that, identifying a site and then working to engage the stakeholders, all of the relevant folks who might have input or need partnership with our response with that encampment. So it might be businesses who are located nearby, certain jurisdictions of police, law enforcement, neighbors, all of the folks who, who might want assay in our implementation with that encampment. And again, also those participants themselves, ensuring that they're interested in that level of service and having an outreach worker coming to see you multiple times a week to work on your goals of stability. After the multidisciplinary team is identified, we work to really identify our timeline. So we ask for about 60 to 90 days so we can provide those really holistic wraparound services to ensure that these folks are moving into a positive outcome. After we sort of get our foundation of our timeline and our team, our street outreach providers will work to engage the residents and identify what we call a by-name list. So we work really hard to ensure that we're targeting folks who are living in that encampment and it's not a particular invite to come to a location to receive services, but rather it's a really strategic way of identifying one encampment and moving those particular folks into housing. So once we've identified a by-name list, our street outreach providers are working to do those wraparound services, mediation, notation services, and then with the primary focus, of course, with moving folks to housing and shelter. Many communities, and we see that it's best practice that during this timeline, that multidisciplinary team is working to plan what we're going to do with the site afterwards. So some communities go as far as creating a park or creating a space for school buses or public buses to park where there's some sort of activity at the site that's a positive outcome for the community and de-incentivizes that site from repopulating. So there's a planning piece for what will happen after that site closes. So these are some of our outcomes thus far. The graph on the left was one of the encampments at the encampment outreach team, in this case was HIV Alliance, that they engaged sort of early on in their implementation. It was a smaller size encampment. And through having that intensive engagement and showing up and working with those folks daily, they were able to move all six of them who were at the particular encampment into permanent housing. And the encampment on the right was a sort of larger size encampment of 18 households. And 88% of those households were moved into housing. I don't know where my little buttons went, but they were on there. 88% of those households, so 16 of them, were moved into permanent housing. We saw a lot of success, we saw challenges, but we also saw a lot of success at Armitage with that connection and that partnership with Lane County Public Works and Lane County Sheriff's Office and really working on streamlining our communication and really aligning our goals. Again, some of our successes thus far is building those partnerships with our other entities who really need to be brought to the table for us to all align our goals and move folks into shelter and housing and create a better space for the community as whole. One of the successes I don't have listed there is the buy-in from the participants themselves. So we, the project can only be successful if the folks who are living there are interested in that level of service. In every encampment that we've engaged, we've had overwhelming interest of this particular project of folks coming around daily, multiple times a week to see you, to work on your activities to recover from your housing crises. So the participants themselves are very engaged with this project. Some of our continued challenges is, again, that buy-in from, from all of the parties and the stakeholders involved because it's not an overnight fix to this crisis. It does take some investment and some patience and communication to really have a holistic response and to get towards those positive outcomes. And then continued goals while our encampment outreach is, is providing that more intensive than our traditional street outreach services. It would be, I would love to see the project get to a spot in our community where that intensive engagement is even more so. So we have more than just street outreach providers there daily, but like, almost like a FEMA, Red Cross response to encampments where there's multiple entities there working together to help this community of folks recover and move in, out of their housing crises. Any questions on the encampment response?
And maybe before questions, I just want to take a moment of incredible kudos for this team. So Ms. Bud and Assistant Director Inman and I went to a national conference on, the National Alliance for Ending Homelessness Conference. And, and we went to multiple sessions on encampment strategies, encampment-based strategies, all of which were essentially, law enforcement has decided to clear an encampment and they've decided they're going to give us two weeks to help these folks. And what can you do in two weeks, which is not exiting 88 to 100% into permanent housing. And the work that this team is doing is really cutting edge. I mean, we were at the conference and I said to Ms. Bud, our team needs to present at these national conferences around the work that we are doing because the success of that work, it takes longer, it takes more community investment. But this is incredible work. This is very cutting edge, which is also why I say, if we had the housing, this team could house everyone in this community. They really, you know, not going to these encampments and saying, oh, well, you can be housed, but you all are, are hopeless, which is what we hear from our community members, right? That a certain percentage of people just cannot be housed and that is not what we are finding when we are engaging in these types of strategies. So I just wanted to take that moment, real hats off and kudos to our team around the work and the investment that they're doing and the success that they're seeing.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you. Yes, that, just seeing the numbers of people that you've been able to permanently house is really incredible. So hopefully you can present because this is absolutely good work. The one that, you know, currently comes out to me is the one at Armitage, right? So the one at Armitage, we definitely got people coming in here, contacting us, emailing us, doing public testimony about the frustration level. And part of that, I guess, is when it becomes known to your team that there's an encampment in a certain location, at what point do we enter into this kind of work? And also being able to communicate with the public what it takes to actually make this happen. Because, you know, people see an issue and they want it fixed and they want it fixed right away. And when you're working with human beings, you know, it takes time, especially ones that have multiple different aspects of their life that need help. And in the process slide before this, my question is, in this process, where can we, or where do you engage the larger community about what's going on, what to expect, what's the current status? Is there a, you know, is there a communication specialist that just works with the greater public? And how does that happen? Because I can imagine that these encampments, you're initially notified because you have community members saying, whoa, there's a camp, an encampment growing over here. This is becoming an issue for us and neighbors are, you know, getting really concerned. And so I'm just trying to determine where in that process and, and I would think that you would need that constant communication with the community throughout.
A try at it. I think, I think it's a challenge and it's a sort of a space in which that we're still learning and that we haven't necessarily had a perfect implementation. A goal would be, we identify the encampment, we work to communicate with the stakeholders of that particular encampment. And then once everybody in that is aligned, I think then we would want to, we would want to approach the rest of the community to say, we're going to implement this here. Here's a timeline we're going to work through. Here's the goals that we're going to try to achieve.
And I think we learned a lot from the Armitage experience. You know, I think one misstep was not fully recognizing the neighborhood that was involved there. I think when we started with Armitage, you know, our outreach team, separate from the encampment team, had been going down there for a year or more, engaging those folks. And, and we just didn't realize like that there were other neighbors involved. We, you know, we were in regular conversations with Public Works, with the Armitage Park Staff, with law enforcement, but we weren't, you know, realizing that there were neighbors down McKenzie View that we needed to connect with. And so that was definitely a learned, so one of, I think, the most important things we learned from Armitage is we need to engage all the stakeholders, the neighbors, everyone from the get-go. I will say that there is some nuance to that because there's a little bit of, does that then put the encampment more on the radar? You know, so you want to make sure that you're balancing kind of that piece of it and that you're proactively having those conversations with the neighborhood about what your intent is and that really there's a shared goal. You know, I handled calls from several folks as well and had some really good conversations that started pretty contentious and ended with, we really have the same goal here and we want to see this area returned to be able to be used by the public. You know, and we didn't share it in this slide, but we've been down, you know, Andrea was down at that site a week ago and there's no one there at this time. Obviously that could change, but those folks haven't moved back. And there was a cycle, some of those folks had been there 10 years. And there was a cycle of, you know, there would be a notice posted, they would leave for a few weeks and then they would come back. And at least at this point, we're not seeing that happen. And so I think that's really gets to the core of, we all want the same thing. It may just be a different way of doing it.
Right. No, in the way in which you're doing it is clearly showing that you're breaking a cycle by getting people in housing. So thank you.
Commissioner Far.
Thank you. And much of what Commissioner Buck stated and asked are questions that I would have, so I'll not belabor that. But you know, you talk about the, none of them are back. I think in no small part because of your communication with the neighbors. Because I think what, what was happening a little bit, and this is my perception, is that they were moving from the site where they were being counseled and moving to an adjacent site and then is easier and, and much more fluid for them to move back. So I think in talking to, I think the Muddy Creek irrigation folks, for instance, and, and some of the folks upstream, I think you did a great job of exactly what you said, communicating with the neighbors and, and making sure that the cycle was broken. I think, you know, once again, Commissioner Buck talked about the things that I would have talked about. Other than this, I want to really blow the trumpet on the success. Nobody's envisioning that we've solved the problem by any stretch of the imagination, but we've identified a way to solve the problem. To begin to really deeply address the problem and it's been recognized. I wish I'd been there at the national conference that you were at. I wish I would have loved to have been in your shadow at that. And also a fly on the wall, just hearing the things that you had, that you witnessed. And I'll bet you were, had difficulty not saying, let me talk, let me talk. Because, because of the success that we are experiencing here on the scale that we're experiencing it. And it really, there's really a lot to be said for the effectiveness, Director Gray and Assistant Director Inman, of the success of this team. It really is well-assembled. And the last thing I'm going to say is that the MAC meeting last week, you did a wonderful presentation. You, very enlightening, a room full of people just listened, hung on every word that you said and you did a superb presentation. You repeated much of that here today. Bravo. It's wonderful to have you as a part of this really effective team. Thank you. Thanks Andrea.
Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Outstanding presentation, very deep, multi-layered. You guys are obviously doing a great job. When you had your presentation in the packet, I geared all my questions to the end. So I'm sorry if I wanted you to get at all the facts out because typically you answer a lot of my questions on the way. So I'm going to retract back, so I'm going to ask for a little bit of grace here. Ms. Andrea, I was just, I'm worked backwards because it might be better for us to think about that. You have the camping grounds. Most of the comments I get from folks when they talk about camping and all the contentiousness about that is they talk about, why is it that the county doesn't have a better codes that would help us get to a place sooner? I mean, I cite, for example, the Springfield Downtown Code. They have an anti, what they call an anti-panhandling thing. But really, it's a, it's a right-of-way exchange that doesn't allow people from curbs to exchange money or goods or services from vehicles in the right-of-way. And I'm wondering if part of the extended plan of doing this better would be to have the county and the cities get together and adopt a unified code system to where we're not dealing with different types of county codes versus city codes and all that kind of things. Have we thought about that?
I haven't thought about it as a solution, but I have definitely seen it be a barrier to our implementation of balancing those different codes and different jurisdictions and different regulations in which that we're all working within.
I think that would be a good idea. James, you talked about some of those folks in Armitage being there 10 years. I saw Kate's face and she was like, whoa. And I was like, mine too. I had no idea people were, you know, that the cycle was continuing like that. And at some point, I've said this before from this diocese, that Lane County needs to focus itself and as you're doing here, that we're going to be darn it, a county of recovery, not a county of enabling. And I think that's the message that you all are putting out with the data that you've done and the work that you've done. So let me back up to the very front. Kate, I so appreciate the fact that we had that conversation about outcomes and you were really looking at what the outcomes were. And I appreciate you making the hard decisions about some things that were lower performing programs. That's definitely a step in the right direction. But I also want the public to know too, that as we move forward, and I think you, you had mentioned this, but not really as plainly as I want to, is that all programs have a shelf life. And as we as a community and a culture and the needs continue to move and that target continues to move, our programs have to be just as nimble. So I, my, my question to that is, is the state and this all-in funding in this round two allowing us the amount of nimbleness that we're going to need to adjust what Lane County does to be the best that Lane County's proving that it is?
You know, it's a, it's a great question and I think that, that remains to be seen with the all-in dollars, honestly. Because we received round one and there was extreme flexibility and that was very helpful with the nimbleness. Round two, we're seeing a greater presentation of what I refer to as prescribed programming. And that reduces the nimbleness, but then also presents opportunities to follow kind of what the state would classify as best practices. And so I think that, you know, we'll have a year of experiences to see how well it works and if it provides the flexibility we need to really achieve those outcomes. So all-in remains new as far as funding goes and we should have this conversation again in a year or two.
Yeah, that's always the question I get too, is, you know, all this money is going there, are we really using the money the most efficient way? And obviously when your entrepreneur background, nimbleness is the best way of using that. I have been monitoring though a Portland organization and when you talked about outcomes and, and basically focusing down on what it is that's working really the best, they've done something very interesting. I want to ask you what you think about this. Portland organization, they're called Hope for Homelessness Foundation. They gathered their 325 nonprofit service providers in their area and they were going to vet them. There was kind of a vetting process. And what they determined was if we're going to vet people and really see if they're the most efficient they can be, they have to come to what's really the root causes of what we're after. And I think you've illustrated it really well. So their two questions that they asked to vet 325 nonprofits were this. Does the agency directly address the underlying causes, the underlying causes of homelessness? Does the agency we're working with address the underlying causes of homeless, the root causes? That's the first question. And the second question was, does this agency assist with both transitional housing and permanent housing? And they figured that if they could have those two questions answered by an agency, that the needle and the metrics would always move in the direction that they, that was the goals. That there wouldn't be money that would just kind of be stagnating and moving, that was just kind of the way we've always done things kind of attitude. And what was interesting about that 325 agencies is only 52 of those agencies could answer those two questions. And so that made a real wide vat of money really focused on what they wanted to do. Because James, I think if you're looking at some of the statistics that you put on there, continually I'm seeing in the houseless and the challenging statistics that we have is we're consistently 17 to 22% of the people that we're still hard to reach. And, you know, based on my own son's experience, it's And, you know, based on my own son's experience, it's because a lot of folks just reject help, or they're not in a capacity or a place where they can make sound decisions to get help, and I think that's the real struggle. And so to vet those two questions on all of the agencies that we work with, do you think that's a good approach? What do you think about that?
You know, I, I think I firstly would have to understand their definitions. You know, in this world, that's really important to make sure that we are, you know, comparing apples to apples. Transitional housing, for example, has numerous definitions and models, and so I think that would be the first step that I would take a look at.
I think one other thing to add is that Ms. Bud already is doing a lot of this type of work, and questioning of providers, which is why you're seeing the narrowing of some of our funding. So for shelters, for example, we are saying, if you are receiving shelter funding from the county, what is your housing focus? How are you helping people to get from shelter into permanent housing? And not every shelter in the community is equally committed to that objective. So I think, I, in my mind, there's, there's some alignment in terms of what, what we are doing, maybe implementing it a little bit differently, but, and, and the example that you gave in assuring that we are focusing our, our dollars on evidence-based practices that will lead to the result of permanent housing.
And let, let me understand too, on slide four, I believe, James, it was, was that showing actually that general fund amount commits $3 million to this work? Was that, was, did I misinterpret that right on slide number four?
You know, it, it doesn't, no. I believe it was illustrating the amount of savings that was realized as a result of the sunsetting of programs, and then the, the bottom, thank you, is indeed the...
General fund.
Total general fund, yes, thank you.
So my question is, if that, if, if we're like at 2021, just under $3 million, and we dropped a little bit, and we're back up to three, almost $3 million of general fund money, and I'm hearing all this all-in funding and all this stuff coming from the state, I'm wondering with this narrowing of focus, is general fund money critical still to the success of these programs, or is that, and I'm just saying this because it's budget time, okay, so don't shoot the messenger here. I'm just wondering if there's some money that could be, because we're getting state funds for a lot of this, if there's general fund money that's available to use elsewhere?
I might, let me go ahead and start, and then you can add in. What I would say is that, yes, first of all, we, we don't have enough dollars in order to serve everyone who's houseless in this community, and, you know, the, the chamber brought in a consulting firm who looked at, how many dollars would it take, and it's a whole lot more than we could ever imagine bringing in. So the fewer dollars we have, the less we can do. The other really important part of a general fund contribution is that we are asking our municipal partners to make general fund contributions to this work. And, and if we pull back on our contributions from the general fund, we lose the ability to say, "You know what, we're doing it too, and we're all in this together." And, and the risk is that we lose more than just the contribution that we pull back in terms of the overall work, which would dramatically influence the ability of our, our local providers to continue the level of services they're providing, which already is not enough to meet the need. So I would say, yes, it's wonderful, we are getting state and federal dollars, and, and it's not enough. Anything you wanna add, Kate?
Just to also add that there are many funding sources, federal HUD dollars, for example, where match is needed. And so the general fund dollars also allow us to, to really leverage both state and federal funds that we are receiving, so that it can be utilized. And so if we didn't have the match dollars locally, we wouldn't be able to bring in those federal dollars, which, you know, at this point is at a 25% to 75% at the federal level.
Great, thanks for that response. And lastly, just the comments that I've been getting from, you know, around my district, talking to folks is, you know, there's three major issues in people's minds: public safety, houselessness and homelessness, and the economy, obviously. So the things that we can do the most with is public safety and homelessness, and I think they go hand in hand. So the reason I ask that question is, is can we, or have we considered, even with Andrea's presentation about camping, have a better partnership by funding our public safety system that would help move our houselessness needle a little further than the opposite way around, funding more homeless and houselessness stuff, and underfunding our public safety system? That's the question I ask. That's coming from my folks.
I think what I, what I might say to that is, the public safety response to houselessness moves houseless people to a different location for different individuals, different community members to try to respond. Our response is to house people who are houseless, so that the public safety system doesn't have to respond. And, and for me, that is getting to the root cause of the problem, much more than further funding a public safety response to the houselessness crisis.
Commissioner Farr.
You know, I'd like to respond a little bit to that specifically. Public safety response to houselessness, they don't have any options right now is the problem. We have ERs, and we have the jail, neither of which is the best option. But today, we funded a, a study, a million dollars, is one of the items we passed in the consent calendar, for the crisis, the stabilization center. And I think that as we work particularly in cooperation with Peace Health and others on stabilization centers, not A, but, you know, places where the public safety response does have an option that they don't have currently, that's really a part of the future of how we handle the public safety response and their coordination with homelessness, as far as I'm concerned. And the work is being done on that, it's not, it wasn't a light switch to turn on as I dreamed it might have been three years ago, but that's, you know, it really is, once again, it's a process. We're moving along that process right now, and we did it, we took a step this morning in our consent calendar, so.
Commissioner Senega.
Yes, thank you. I just have a quick question, and Ms. Bud, you kind of brought it up, definitions matter, and there's, there's a lot of that here. What, what is your definition of permanent placement? What does that look like?
Basically, it's that there's no defined end date for it. So, you know, with, with permanent supportive housing, that could be, you know, like MLK Commons, where someone can stay there indefinitely as they're receiving the subsidy. For diversion, we, it's the same definition, but we, we measure it slightly different. So with diversion, we just need to hear confirmation from, you know, if, if the person, if the outcome is that the person is, is moving into housing with a family member, or moving into housing with a coworker, and they're not on a formal rental agreement, we need to hear from the, the entity providing housing, that they can stay there indefinitely, that there's no, no end date. And we've pulled some, not to get us in a different conversation, but we've pulled some of our diversion data for our conversations with the state, and we're seeing, do you remember the exact percentage? Yeah, 4% of the households we served through diversion returned to homelessness within the year that we've done it. So that's, I mean, that's incredible, that's much smaller than, than many of our interventions. And so I think what, you know, using that, that definition of permanency has worked, at least for diversion.
Gotcha. So, say Bridges on Broadway would be one of those help places?
As it, as it shifts into a permanent supportive housing, correct?
Correct. So I, I saw, I was just looking at the numbers, and I think it was currently operating, or was currently operating for April, at around 32 people, and now it's gonna hold 57. Is, or there's gonna be 57 units, I believe you said? Is it operating at, I mean, roughly half currently, or, you know, why, why are only half of those held? Or do they not, does it not fit 57 units currently?
Though, I think, well, there's a couple things. So the, when we started at the kind of six-month mark of when it was gonna close, there had already been some folks that had moved out, and, and we didn't bring in new referrals because we knew it was gonna close, and we didn't wanna, we wanted to make sure we had six months to be able to work with those folks, so that's part of it. And Kate may know more about the renovation, but my understanding is, part of it is to meet the requirements of permanent supportive housing, they need to make changes to the actual rooms to include like kitchen-type kitchenettes, or some sort of, you know, ability to cook, and so that leads to an overall reduction of like the total number of rooms, because right now, it's just a hotel, you know, former hotel that didn't have those pieces.
Got it, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I think one theme I'm hearing here is, everyone is so appreciative and so of the work that you're doing, and so encouraged by the outcomes, and I think defining, saying outcomes-driven isn't really detailed enough, it's what is that outcome? Sort of to the point Director Gray made, there's a tension between often the public's goal with encampments, their outcome is, it went away. Our outcome is, where did they go away to, and how stable and safe is that? So just saying focused on outcomes doesn't really quite paint the full picture, so, and I think that is what's really important when, you know, Vice Chair's a really important point about public safety response versus, you know, and where does the funding go, is what is the outcome? And often, what I'm hearing is, the public safety response to an encampment achieves the outcome of, it goes away, but it doesn't achieve the outcome of, it houses people. It, it, but they also are clearly very much an integral part of the encampment response, public safety. So we're actually not trading off a public safety response or a Human Services Division response, it's a partnership response. So I think that's, that's really important, as it's the leverage piece that you mentioned. I, I have a couple of, just sort of, well, actually, I wanna make one more comment, and then I have three very brief sort of operational questions about the encampment work. I just wanna note, you know, that there's no overnight fix is really important. I mean, how many of us here have ever moved in our lives? We don't do that overnight, we don't pack up everything, we don't identify that where we are isn't working, find the new space, pack up all our belongings, physically move them, go back and clean up the old space, that takes time. And I know for me, you know, coming up on a year since having done that, that took months, and I was as resourced as I needed to be to do it, and had all kinds of options for finding the new place, and, and support and help and financial resource and all the things to, to affect that move. So asking folks who are so severely compromised and under-resourced and expecting they could move any more quickly than that is just a sort of perspective piece I wanted to bring in. Encampment outreach, how does the jurisdiction or property ownership impact the response and the results or outcomes? Because that's a complex piece we haven't talked about.
I think we're still learning lots, a lot about it, but I think ultimately it affects, the buy-in is really important. So just having the, all of the stakeholders and whoever's jurisdiction it's in know that we're implementing this project and working together, so that piece of public safety, like if the public safety folks in that area are not aware that we're implementing this project, we can accidentally sort of contradict each other's work, where if we're engaging the jurisdiction, letting them know that we're working here, and sort of collaborating on some of that mediation piece that public safety might be implementing, then, then we have better outcomes, folks can hold on to their belongings, their life-saving medications, and, and continue to work towards stabilization versus sort of being moved to a different location. So just that collaboration and communication piece is, is really, from my perspective thus far, the, the meat of that.
And how does an encampment get ID'd for support from our team? And do we have the capacity to meet that need? And the sort of part, other part of that is, how many encampments are we currently in the works of supporting in decamping?
Good ques-- I didn't quite understand the piece of your first.
Oh, how does an encampment get ID'd? Is it completely sort of complaint-driven, that we wait for someone to call us and say, "Hey"? I mean, I know I've been working with James on a, on a, on a site, yeah.
So the site that we're currently implementing, Encampment Outreach at, is the site in which that you are aware of, the site behind BRING, who has been a really awesome partner in communicating with us around our services, and that patience of building rapport and getting folks moving towards that stabilization, and then also, we're at the point of sort of creating that cleaning of the site, so make the site itself more habitable while we continue to work there. I think the idea of encampment has been sort of a hodgepodge of ways, because we haven't really ironed out that piece, where sometimes where our provider, HIV Alliance, can ultimately identify a camp themselves and say, "We're gonna work at this encampment, as long as the folks living there want to work with the encampment and wanna engage in that process." And then also, if, if we do hear from our community that there is a particular encampment in which that needs attention, we're happy to, happy to try and engage a multidisciplinary group to see if we can implement that project there.
And I would just add, there's a lot of conversations nationally in encampment-focused work on that exact piece of, how do you determine the encampment that you're gonna work with? Because sometimes when it's complaint-driven, there's other issues that play around, like around equity, and, and is it a, are there more complaints because it's an encampment in a certain part of the community versus an encampment that's in another community? And we certainly don't wanna focus only on the encampments that are solely complaint-driven. And so there's just, yeah, I think there's a lot we still need to, to sort out, but I think it goes back to what Andrea was saying, is we need to have the invested jurisdictions or the property owners, you know, that commitment of 90 days, that's really kind of what's been key in the conversations, like, that's the first thing we need to establish.
Great, thank you. And so that makes me think or ask, are we coordinating with, with other jurisdictions that are not our, I mean, all the ones that we're mentioning are in unincorporated, or, you know, county, or other jurisdictions that are not an incorporated city, and not necessarily even the county either, right? Railroads, or ODOT, or what have you, but I love the idea of you going to national conferences, but also what about right here? And working with, you know, City of Eugene, Willamette, Parks, some of our rural communities to sort of share with them some of these best practices about addressing these issues that are happening all over the county? How are we, how are we working in cooperation with or to support and educate those other jurisdictions in Lane County?
I think the, the biggest piece is, we are still, like as Andrea mentioned, learning a great deal. And at this point, you know, the, the encampment that Andrea referenced is, is the third. And every area, whether it's a new jurisdiction, or there's a new stakeholder involved, it takes a great deal of, of conversations, education, and then building that collaboration. And so at, at this point, I think the opportunity is to choose diverse areas to focus encampments around, and then that gives us that opportunity to work with cities, or Willamette, or, or whomever. The vetting of the encampment is a vital piece of the puzzle, because if there isn't receptivity, even among, you know, one or two of the stakeholders, then that may not be where the focus needs to be. You know, we just might need to go to a different encampment to be able to vet, and, a chair you had asked about capacity, and, and honestly, the capacity is, is very small. We have a team through HIV Alliance who really can focus on, you know, one encampment, and we're continuing to learn every encampment that, that has been focused on, and very much looking for, for other funding opportunities to be able to grow further. And so the more we can bring to a grant application about what has been learned and what partners have been able to come to the table and, and work collaboratively with the effort, I think the more successful we'll be at being able to garner additional dollars.
Great, thank you. And I'll just, I'll just finish by bringing us back to what Director Gray pointed out, which is really the single greatest challenge, is we can deliver all the services and coordinate all we want, and people can be as receptive to them as we want, but if the goal is permanent housing and there aren't houses to put them in, that's a problem. Thank you. Great, thank you all so much. Anything concluding comments from the panel? Great, thank you all for being here this morning.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, is there any other business from the board? Anything from our administrator, as he comes back to the, to the table? He's just checking to see if there might be some other business. I will note, while he's doing that, we do not have need for an executive session this morning, and I'll also note before we hop into Commissioner's business, at our last meeting, we talked about, at the request of Commissioner Buck, having a placeholder for committee updates. We haven't yet really had a conversation. I was gonna kind of work with the administrator and Tanya and make the rounds to think about, do we wanna structure those in some way, so we don't, if we have this sort of open-ended thing that could be a, a one-minute to a one-hour item, how, how we really wanna kind of manage that? So I will just say, anybody that wants to give a, a brief update on some of their committee work is welcome too, and then as we sort of sort out how we wanna make that a recurring part of our meeting, we can, we can do that as we, as we go over these next few months. Is there any other business from?
Is there any other business from the administrator this morning? Okay, then, any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Farr.
Actually, Chair Trigger, you actually made an announcement that I was going to announce, and that's right through that window there. And everybody in the room, look behind you. Oh, wait, there's only one person in the room. But the farmer's market is open today, and I think there's going to be a presentation at some point during the day of a, or a highlight of a million-dollar donation that they received a little bit earlier. So it's a, I'll be walking over there at lunchtime, probably grab my lunch over there today and bring it back here, so encourage everybody to do the same.
Thank you. No other announcements, seeing none. Would any commissioner like to share any sort of highlights or news from committees that they're currently serving on? Vice Chair. Real quickly, just, it's probably maybe premature, a week from Friday, Travel Lane County is going to honor the retirement of Carrie Westlin, 28 years on that helm. She's done a really great job, and so they're currently actively looking for a new director, but that's a week from Friday at the Graduate Hotel at 11:30. Thank you. Are there any future assignment requests from the board this morning? Seeing none, we then have no need to review assignments. Any other business from the board before we recess for lunch? Seeing none. I am going to read us in, because when we come back after lunch at 1:30, we do have a 1:30 time-certain executive session, which will be then followed by a public session with a discussion and action on our charter review committee recommendations. So at the sound of my gavel, we will be in recess and reconvene in executive session at 1:30 PM. Executive session is to consider information or records exempt by law from public inspection. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602F, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are precluded from attending. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. Members of the news media are not allowed to tape, video, record, or otherwise record an executive session. Verbatim notes are prohibited. No decision will be made in executive session. We reserve the right to come back out into public session should the need arise.